Evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of December 15th, 2021. The City Hall Council Chambers remain closed to the public in accordance with Assembly Bill 361. All members of the City Council and city staff will join the meeting via phone or video conference, and no teleconference locations are required. The following alternatives are available to members of the public who wish to watch the meeting or provide comments during the City Council before and during the meeting. We've got Comcast and Cable 96, then we have our YouTube, then we have our Zoom meeting. All those links can be found on the city's website. How to comment during a public meeting? Public comments will be taken at the time of each eligible agenda item. If you are a Zoom Video Conference participant, to comment by Zoom Video Conference, click Raise Your Hand button to request to speak when public comment is being taken on eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. If you are a phone participant, to comment by phone, please call on one of the above listed phone numbers that are on the city's webpage. You will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing *9 to request to speak when public comment is being taken on an eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. Then press *6 to unmute yourself in order to speak. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. All attendees shall be muted upon entry to the meeting. Please do not raise your hand if the item currently being heard is not the item you wish to speak on. We will call for public testimony on each item individually. When the item you are interested in is called and public speakers are invited to raise hands, raise your hand, and then we will call on them in the order they are raised. You may, of course, speak on multiple items, but your comments during each item must address the item currently under discussion. Speakers attempting to speak about items other than the item currently under consideration will be muted and asked to wait for the item they're here to speak about and to be called. If there is any disruption to the meeting, the live feed of the YouTube and Channel 96 will be paused for a short period of time. Once the disruption is corrected, the live feed will resume, and the meeting will continue where it left off. Right? We will begin with the invocation, and we have here with us tonight Pastor Mike New from St. John's Lutheran Church. Pastor Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of rain and snow you brought this week. We ask you to continue to supply us with more of the same to replenish our water supplies for your people and our crops. We ask you to relieve your people of the pandemic that affects us. We wish to be able to resume a normal life once again. Help us to have the courage and the wisdom, as many of us prepare to celebrate the birth of your son, to remember that the greatest of us started from a lowly and humble birth. Your son taught us that the first shall be last and the last shall be first. In order to lead, we must first learn to serve. Grant each of us who participate in these proceedings tonight the wisdom to properly serve your people before all other considerations. Help us to control ourselves and maintain civility even when we disagree, to respect each other, no matter what their opinion. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Have a wonderful holiday season. Merry Christmas. Thanks for being with us. We'll now go to item two, the Pledge of Allegiance led by Police Chief Breezy.
Dear Mr. Mayor, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Roll call, Ms. Melanie.
Jones.
Present.
Lambert.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Lamis.
Here.
Furia.
Here. We have a quorum. Now move to item four, consideration approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Councilmember Lambert, you'll make that motion to approve that.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Yamas here, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert and a second by Councilmember Yamas to approve the agenda as submitted. Roll call, Ms. Melanie.
Jones.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Lamis.
Yes.
Furia.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Agenda has been approved. Move on to item five. And I see Assistant Chief Straub is on. Let me see if he'd like to turn on his camera. This is a great honor for me, be able to read this, present this proclamation to my friend, Assistant Chief Robert Straub. Proclamation recognizing retirement, the City of Los Angeles Assistant Fire Chief Robert Straub. Whereas Robert Straub became a member of the Los Angeles Fire Department on August 27th, 1992. And whereas Robert Straub was hired as a full-time firefighter by the City of Los Angeles on September 16th, 1997, and was promoted through the ranks of fire engineer on December 10th, 2001, fire captain on July 1st, 2006, and assistant fire chief on November 16th, 2017. And whereas Robert Straub has contributed tremendously throughout his career to the community of Los Angeles with his knowledge and commitment to this job. And whereas Robert Straub will retire from the City of Los Angeles as Assistant Fire Chief on December 10th, 2021, with 24 years of service as a full-time city employee. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the City of Los Angeles do hereby commend Robert Straub on his dedication and loyalty to the City of Los Angeles and congratulate him on his retirement. Be it for the proclaim that this proclamation was presented to Robert Straub at the City Council meeting held on December 15th, 2021. And of course, there's the beautiful proclamations. Our city staff always does a beautiful job preparing those. Back to say a few words, Chief. You're on mute. You're on mute.
Wasn't sure what, Chief, you're asking for?
Oh, sorry. Assistant Chief.
I will, yeah. Assistant Chief Straub. I'll allow Robert to get on, but I just, before he speaks, I want to tell Robert, thank you for your service, your partnership, your friendship, and your mentorship to our entire department and help and service to our community. Congratulations, and I hope you're enjoying it. And by all means, come down and visit us, please. We'll see you soon.
Thank you, Chief. Now Assistant Chief Straub. Sorry about the confusion. Still muted. Still muted, Robert. Stupid computers. All right. Well, thank you very much. We'll have to have you drop in at a public forum sometime and speak when you have your, when you get that computer squared away from your retirement location. Thanks a lot. Congratulations. Very good. And so then we'll move on to item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within jurisdiction of the City Council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No item will, no action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines on how to participate and make comments are listed on pages one and two of this agenda. Comments received prior to the meeting will be read into the record at the appropriate time during the City Council meeting. And Ms. Melanie, do we have any comment from the public?
I have an email from the public that it is in regards to the agenda item 12. So I don't know if you would like that read now or just hold it for that agenda item 12.
If it's specifically targeted to item 12, then we'll go ahead and read it at that time.
Okay. And I have no other comments.
Okay. I see some hands raised. Mr. Collins?
Okay, well, I was gonna do video. Okay, here it goes. Hello, everybody. Nice to see you guys. By the way, Tom, I really like your mug. I saw that.
Thanks.
So anyway, the reason why I'm coming to the meeting and why I wanted to speak is largely directed at Councilwoman Deborah Lewis, and my reasoning for doing such is because I have called twice and left two messages. I have texted and I have emailed, and she will not respond to me or speak with me. So this is my only way to speak with you. And this could have been done privately, but unfortunately, this is the only way I can get my voice heard. And the thing I want to talk about is something that's come up a lot lately, which is we've talked about the administrative fees, the various small fees for the Fourth of July. And we've talked about fees then for all the other organizations regarding different festivities, et cetera. The thing I really want to harp on is just the fact that when, when you, Ms. Lewis, when you direct staff to go back and constantly look at it, how much are we spending here? How much are we doing this? How much are we doing that? Not to put the guy on the spot, but you know, Josh makes like 100K a year. Stacy, I'm not gonna say her salary, but it's nothing to tease at. A lot of the staffers are well-paid. If you look at their hourly salary, we're talking between 35 up to like 45 bucks an hour. My point is simply this. We're spending more money in looking into whether it's equitable to spend a $350 fee than to just do it or don't. And it's ridiculous. And it's not the only thing. We're doing it over and over and over again. From a business perspective, you know, you would kind of look at where it makes sense to cut your loss and where to invest in time. And there's many issues I'd love to see discussed, like moving the airport or the feasibility of bringing in a regional hospital, and tons of really important things a lot of people care about. But we're wasting so much meeting time, so much staff time over really small petty stuff. And the reason why I think we're doing it is because there are some people in town, it really matters to them. They could care less how much money this wastes, how much time this wastes, because they have personal vendettas and beef, right? And we're all aware of what I'm talking about and who I'm talking about, but I'm not gonna name specifically, but you know. And that's the thing, it's very stupid. This cutting off our nose to spite our face consistently over and over again to prove a point or what? Currently, right now, as the ordinance is already section, I believe it's item eight under section H, if I can recall right. But council already has the ability to waive any departmental fees that it wants to as is. And when we're talking about public safety, you really have to provide that. I mean, look at what happened in Gilroy like two years ago. We don't want to repeat of that. Not having officers present could result in something really bad, you know, happening. And the thing is, is it's there anyway. Officers are on duty, whether they're physically there or somewhere else in town. And it doesn't make sense to have organizations purchase them or their time because that's not fair to the organization, because then the officer theoretically can't go respond to something that's happening across town because they are being paid for to be here. And so that's not really doing anyone justice. And so I also didn't like hearing all the creating of new criteria after the fact, you know, referring to the tables and chairs and damages. That policy should be in place prior to giving those out, not afterwards. You can't retroactively come up with fees and such. So I guess what I'm simply saying is, is that these seem to me like pretty small petty stuff. And we're spending a lot of time and a lot of money, we're spending thousands to save a few hundred. And to me, that's just very poor stewardship of money, and we constantly do it with this guise of, I want to be good stewards of our money, but really, we're spending five to save Y, and it makes no sense. So be more considerate with staff's time and realize that there's an opportunity cost. And every hour you have them spending on something small like this is an hour they're not spending on something more important to most people. Most people just enjoy the Fourth of July and really could care less who ran it. They just like the event. And so I'd like people to kind of remember that, that outside of their small circle of friends, the vast, vast majority of people really don't care about those petty little rivalries and really just want to have a good time and want the best for businesses. So with that, I'm gonna sign off.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Do we have anyone else in the public who would like to speak?
Oh, yeah, I raised my hand already.
Oh, there it is. It's hidden behind, it's hidden in front of Santa's.
All right.
I just see it now because it was there, it looked like part of Santa.
Thank you very much, City Council staff. During the November 23rd American Rescue Plan Act workshop, the City Council listened to members of the public who had ideas as to how to spend money, the grant money. And I presented an idea about preserving the Los Angeles Enterprise newspaper, both online and in print. The current owners are, have no intentions of keeping it going. And the importance of reliable information to help create an informed public concerning Los Angeles' government, education, sports, community events, and public notices. The current corporate owner, like I said, has no intentions of keeping the enterprise in business, and a couple ROIs would be in the form of potential for small businesses through advertising and would help promote the creation of jobs locally. The current newspaper provides public notices, but nothing else. And my idea would be to revitalize the newspaper into what it should be before it no longer exists. At the November 23rd meeting, the council directed staff to meet with Mr. Lee and his business partner and have a conversation concerning their business plan and bring back to council a business model that could potentially work. I waited to hear from someone, and on Friday afternoon, December 10th, City Manager Josh Panero called to inform me that the city would not be providing any grant money toward a newspaper. He continued by saying that he believes newspapers are dead and that money given to a newspaper would be a waste for the City of Los Angeles. He said that he has spoken to city council members since the November 23rd workshop and that they are now, quote, "cold," unquote, on the subject of a local newspaper. While I hope the council is not too cold on the subject of a local newspaper in Los Angeles, my business partner currently owns and operates nine local community newspapers, both in print and online, in nearby cities of Gustine, Newman, as well as Manteca, Oakdale, Ceres, Turlock, Riverbank, Escalon, and Ripon. Both of us want to meet very much still with staff and possibly one or two council members to discuss the possibilities of a locally owned and operated newspaper in Los Angeles. And as the city manager told me when he ended our brief phone conversation, he said, quote, "This is not personal, it's business," unquote. So I say to all of you, I am not looking to upset anyone. This truly is not personal, it's just business. And it's a business that I feel very strongly is needed in Los Angeles. Do you really want to live in a town where a viable newspaper, without a viable newspaper, and that has a local media organization behind it? Our country's history has proven that freedom of the press is vital as it shines a light on democracy. If the new city manager doesn't want to shine light on what he does, then democracy dies in darkness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Ballard?
Okay, now can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Ms. Ballard.
Oh, by the way, I'm not Walt Ballard, I'm just using a computer that has his name on it. So I'm the better half, Kathy Ballard. I just have a question in regards to Measure H. I wanted to speak now so I could get all the council members in regards to it. We have not had a meeting since it was voted in quite a while ago because we don't have a quorum. So I am asking the council in regards to this, if it's possible to set up any kind of a meeting without a quorum, or do we have to wait until we have enough people on the committee? That's my concern. I don't know what's being spent, how it's being spent in regards to it, but that's all I wanted to voice on that opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ballard. We'll defer, I don't know. Thank you, Mrs. Ballard. Will defer, I don't know, Mr. Vaughn wants to chime in on that, or if you want to wait till we can discuss it, and bring it back to council, or get back to Mrs. Ballard?
Yeah, I'm not prepared to discuss that at the public forum, but we can take a look, take a look into it, and get back to the City Council, Ms. Ballard, on that.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, I see no other hands raised. So then I will close the public forum, and let the public know that at seven o'clock, at seven o'clock, I have to go to the item regarding the redistricting, which is item 10A. We still have time, but we're going to go to the, we're going to close the public forum now, and then go to the consideration, the approval and consent agenda. And I think, yeah, we should be able to get that done in time. So, Ms. Maloney? Let me read this first. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. Now, Ms. Maloney, if you please, read the consent agenda items.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Rule numbers 230022 through 230187, in the amount of $554,115.86. Minutes for the November 17, 2021 city council meeting. Minutes for the November 23, 2021 adjourned city council meeting. Minutes for the December 1, 2021 city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6430, approving a tentative agreement memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Los Banes and the Los Banes Police Officers Association from December 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. City Council Resolution Number 6431, amending Division 4 salary schedule and equipment classifications relating to changes to Section F police associated with the Los Banes Police Officers Association tentative agreement memorandum of understanding. City Council Resolution Number 6432, adopting a revised budget for the 2021-2022 fiscal year as it pertains to increasing expenditures in the fire department capital outlay specialized equipment account in the amount of $31,404.6. City Council Resolution Number 6433, accepting public improvements for Sunrise Ranch Phase 3, 12.48 plus or minus acres, generally located within the area bounded by East B Street to the north, future San Luis Street to the south, Jolynn Park Manor subdivision to the east, and Place Road to the west, APN 42808001 for Stonefield Homes, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6434, accepting public improvements for Sunrise Ranch Phase 4, 7.66 plus or minus acres, generally located within the area bounded by East B Street to the north, future San Luis Street to the south, Jolynn Park Manor subdivision to the east, and Place Road to the west, APN 42808001 for Stonefield Home, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6435, accepting a grant deed for a 10-foot public utility easement dedication of approximately 21,814 square feet of land, crossing future Badger Flat Boulevard to the northern portion of future Granite Boulevard, and north along the western portion of Limestone Boulevard, and authorizing the city manager to execute the associated documents, Anderson Homes, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6436, accepting a grant deed for a 10-foot public utility easement dedication of approximately 4,273 square feet of land along the western portion of future Badger Flat North, of future Granite Boulevard, and authorizing the city manager to execute the associated documents, Anderson Homes, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6437, reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the City of Los Banes pursuant to the provisions of AB 361. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. I'll go to council. And please let me know if you would like any items pulled for either discussion, let us know for discussion, or a separate vote. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor, item E, just for a comment.
Very good, comment. Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No items for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Ms. Lewis?
No items, that's to me.
Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
No items. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So let's go right to item E, Mr. Jones's request here. And for that, we go to City Clerk, Human Resources Director Maloney.
Actually, we don't need a discussion on. I just wanted to thank staff for all their hard work in reaching an agreement with the Los Banes Police Officer Association. So great job, staff. That's all.
Okay, very good. Well, since you have the floor, would you like to make the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert, second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Lambert, to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Ms. Maloney, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Furia?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Moving on to item eight. And thank you, staff. A lot of items in there, a lot of work represented there that we authorized very quickly, and we appreciate it very much. Item eight, consideration of approval of City Council Resolution Number 6438, accepting the grant deed from the Los Banes Designated Local Authority as successor agency to the former Los Banes Redevelopment Agency to the City of Los Banes, 0.13 acre parcel located downtown at 644 and 646 I Street, undeveloped land, assessors parcel number 025201010. And for that, we go to City Attorney Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and welcome members of the public. This item tonight, if approved, is the acceptance of one more DLA property in addition to the seven that the city has already accepted. As Mr. Furia noted in reading the agenda item, this is a .13 acre parcel located on I Street in downtown Los Banes, specifically 644 and 646 I Street. It's currently zone mixed use and undeveloped. There used to be a three-story concrete building on the property that you may recall, which had been abandoned for many years and became dilapidated, and I think was called the Pigeon Coop, because apparently the pigeons found a nice place to have a home for a while. In any event, in 2018, the DLA demolished and removed the building, and so now there's nothing there other than bare ground. In September, the city obtained a condition of title guarantee from Transcounting Title. After reviewing the title guarantee, there are no exceptions to the title, which would be of major concerns to the city in accepting this piece of property. In addition, in December of 2021, this month, December 1, actually, city had its consultant, Provost and Pritchard, prepare a Phase 1 environmental site assessment on the property to make sure there were no environmental conditions that we were not aware of prior to accepting the property. And the Phase 1 assessment revealed no evidence of any recognized environmental conditions in connection with the property that would be cause for concern in terms of accepting this property. So based on all of that, staff is recommending that you adopt Resolution 6438. And I am here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I will go through council for question or comment. Mr. Jones?
No questions or comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
No questions or comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. No questions or comment from council, so shall I entertain a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6438 as read by title?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, so moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Jones, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Portim Loust, and a second by Councilmember Jones to approve City Council Resolution Number 6438 as read. Roll call, Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Furia?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Makes me very happy to watch these properties finally getting wrapped up and into our city's hands, and useful for citizens, and to benefit our residents. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I know you have a lot of hours invested in these projects.
Thank you, council.
Move on to item nine. Yes, we have plenty of time. Consideration of approval of City Council Resolution Number 6439, authorizing various expenditures from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, and adopting a revised budget for fiscal year 2021-22 as it pertains to these expenditures. And for this item, we go to Finance Director Williams.
Good evening, may I, council members. Tonight, what I have for you is a partial or phased-in ARPA spending plan based on some of the information that council provided and showed interest in at the workshop that we held on November 23. The specific items that we're asking for funding and for approval tonight include the Rad Card Program, which we discussed, which was to help support small businesses within the City of Los Banes. And it was a fund matching program. We're asking the council to fund this program up to $1 million. And again, as we previously discussed, we'll do this in increments, depending on the success of the program. The second item that we're asking council to approve tonight is the invest in technology and equipment for the police department. We did up that by $100,000 based on the request of council. And again, this is for equipment that will help the police department basically solve crimes, things that they need. Additionally, we're asking for upgrades to city-owned property. This is specifically HVAC systems. The first systems that we'll be replacing are at Fire Station 1. And then we will be looking at the City Hall HVAC and the Fire Station 2, and then we'll move and look at buildings after that, if they're still available funding. We're asking for $250,000. Homeless assistance program, if you remember, this is for vouchers, so people, if we need to find them shelter, to protect them from the spread of COVID or to quarantine, we're asking for $100,000 to provide hotel vouchers. And then finally, the last one that we're asking for tonight in Phase 1 of our spending plan is $75,000 to invest in fixing up Colorado Ballpark. So these are what we considered shovel-ready projects, you can say. We still are looking into the other items that council mentioned. And just to refresh your memory, those projects include water and wastewater infrastructures. Council showed a lot of interest in that. Broadband infrastructure, further investments in parks, including pickleball, small business starter loans, and employee COVID-19 testing, in case that's implemented by Cal OSHA. So these are things that we were planning on bringing back to a later date, but like I said, I didn't want to hold off projects that were essentially shovel-ready, that we could be participating in now while we're still doing the research. And additionally, just as a reminder, we've only received half of the funding, so we can't start all those projects until the second phase of the funding is received, which will be July of 2022. So tonight, we're just asking again for those items I mentioned, the Rad Card, investment in technology upgrades to city property, homeless assistance, and investment in parks. So we're asking you to approve that resolution, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Nice to see this moving forward, and we'll keep moving forward as we can. We go up with new desires and directions, and we go straight to them and implement them. This is good. We'll go through council for question or comment. Mr. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Finance Director Williams, what was the additional items that were not on the list that were open for discussion?
I don't have.
That you mentioned?
The ones that we're not funding tonight, those in...
Yes, please.
Those include the water and wastewater infrastructure, small business starter loans, broadband infrastructure, investment in parks, and employee COVID-19 testing.
Thank you. Some of those sound good, but the small business starter loans or grants, it just seems like we're going down an endless rabbit hole. It seems like what we do for one business, we'd have to be open to hearing 500 to 1,000 other businesses. And I don't think we have the capacity as a city to address everybody's individual businesses there. So I would like to remove that one from future discussion, just because I just think it's going to be so tedious. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones. We'll make note of that. Mr. Lambert?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Williams, I was just curious on the Rad Card Program. What's its proof? Do we have a procedure yet, or how that's going to be implemented?
So the Rad Card Program is run by the people who designed it out of Stanislaus County, and they will market for us. They will also go out and reach out to the businesses to see who's interested. They'll help them set up the apps on their side. They'll go through everything. On our side, we'll simply help them promote it. So we would, you know, do Facebook, Instagram, things like that, just to continue to promote it. But it will be completely run and managed by the Rad Card founders.
Okay, so the businesses won't have to reach out, they're actually going to be reaching out to businesses?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Ms. Lewis?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, really, we discussed the Rad Card Program a bit extensively at the last meeting, and it sounds like a really good program to help our businesses, especially as they struggled during the time of COVID. So I just wanted to give an extra push on that, and hope that we can get that program moving as quickly as possible, so we can reinvest in the businesses that were able to stand during COVID. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you very much. Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Williams, will this money be able to help us with some of the water issues we're having?
If we can show that it is in relation to COVID, then yes. There are some infrastructure needs that we could do with water, and that's what we're researching. And as you know, those are some of the most expensive items, and can really use up the ARPA funding quickly. So it is something that, you know, we just want to go through the projects that we have on the books now, see what may apply to it. And maybe if we're, we don't have the funding available for that, and this would help us make it more of a priority, because it's urgent, then that's what we're trying to decide right now on the back end. So yes, it may be able to help us with some of our issues.
Very good. Thank you for that. Thank you for looking into that. Also, with the small business, I think currently we only have one request to look at, and I think that's Mr. Leib's. And I would ask that you continue with the previous council's request to look in and sit down with Mr. Leib, and to see what he has, to see if it's even something viable, so that we check that box. Because I think that one thing that I like about a newspaper is that I'm not waiting for something to download, I'm not... not getting advertisements. You know, I've got the paper right here in front of me. I can read it. I can refer to it. I know who wrote it. And it's, again, I can read it at my leisure, not have to worry about whether I have good connectivity. As you know, we're getting this newspaper, and I'm really enjoying reading it. It's, again, you can read it at your leisure. You can put it down. You can put it up right where your laptop, and you're not reading it, and all of a sudden you get a text message or an email, and it interrupts your reading. So again, it's really refocused myself that it is something that I like. It's useful. There's advertisement there. And again, it's readily available. It's something that the city can use to post its legal notices. So I'd just really like to continue with the previous council's request to sit down with Mr. Leib. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So I'm very pleased with all these projects. And the, I know the wastewater issues. We have, there's a lot of other grant money available for those kinds of things. And we can, we're definitely looking at that kind and special funding money. That has been, water quality in Los Banos has been ongoing. Los Banos has been on the vanguard. We brought in a company from Sweden, if I remember right, and did a filtering system when we had chromium 6 issues. And have all kinds of testing, and we're staying on top of it all the time. And so if we needed to use ARPA for that, then I'd say, okay, for those water quality issues, if we can avoid using ARPA for that, I'd rather use other sources and save that up for other things, infrastructure development and whatnot. But it is, water wastewater development, purple pipe, that sort of thing, well, development, that's all, that's all good stuff wherever you get the money. So what we have with, council is pretty good, is good with all of this, just a couple of items that there's some, maybe some disstreaming on or desire not to pursue. I wish I put it that way. So Mr. Jones does not want to see the small business loans pursued. I'm going to go through council and see if anyone else agrees with that, then we can have one motion here with a nice clear direction. Mr. Lambert, how do you feel about the small business loans? Yes or no?
I believe we can keep it there, because I believe there's going to be certain guidelines that are going to have to be met for this.
All right, very good. Ms. Lewis?
Uh, yes. I looked at the term loan, and that means that the money has to be repaid back. Also, I thought about during the time when we received money during the RDA time, and the city gave out, well, they called them loans, but they were never being recovered or paid back, and it was just an absolute tragedy. And people at that time were not required to have a business plan. A lot of people had never been in business before, and they weren't equipped to know how to sustain themselves, so a lot of them were out of business within six months at a maximum of a year. So I, you know, I do not see this as a viable way of spending this money, because we have so many other things that are necessary to keep our city going, our infrastructure, and the protection of our community, and I'd much rather see the money spent there. I think it's an admirable idea that someone wants to start a newspaper, but I don't think the taxpayers should be in a position of doing that. So I wouldn't be in favor of using any of these funds for a newspaper or any kind of startup businesses, because of past history and how things have happened in the city. Thank you.
So you would not like to see it used for small business loans? Very good. Okay. And then, Mr. Yamas, small business loans, how are you on that?
Yes, sir. I think I'd like to keep it. I think something that, a couple of issues that we had, we recently had a little standoff over here. We had a couple of items that, you know, the public was unaware of, uneasy. They didn't have a central point of information. And then we have some folks providing their opinion on it. And I think this would be a voice for a city official to go out there and meet with the reporter, and that way the public has ready reference from a official instead of just an opinion out there on the web.
Mr. Yamas, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this particular question that I was asking.
Sorry, yes, sir.
The general, the general term for small business loans.
I'm sorry about that.
Kind of that Mr. Jones recommended we remove.
Yes, my fault.
Okay, so you want to keep, you want to keep the small business loans in, okay. So we have two council members that do want to keep the small business loan opportunity in and two who do not. For general small business loan, that overall program, I'm going to go ahead and say, yes. Let's keep the potential of that in there, and we'll develop, and if we go go a little further down the road on how that's going to look. So we can let, let's let staff spend a little more time about to decide how that will look before I, before I would make a decision one way or another, or vote one way or the other, to see whether it's something I really want to support or not. I'd like to see a little more on how it's going to be, how it's going to be executed. So we'll keep the small business loans in, and then the other item, then the, trying to see if there was any other item to remove. No, everybody supports the Rad Cards. And then now, Mr. Yamas had mentioned that he did want to see staff follow up to see about the newspaper, the potential of funding either loan or either loan or money for a newspaper business. So I'll go through council and see where council sits on that idea. Mr. Jones?
Same stance. It's just, I like the idea of a newspaper coming back to town, but again, we get it into a rabbit hole by talking about what we're going to prioritize as far as funding, whether it's one individual business or another, and no matter what, it's going to wind up bad for us as a city, so not saying anything on the individual business, just us for getting involved in private business, people's private business. It's just something government shouldn't get involved with, so no across the board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, is this the one that we just said, yes, on previous?
On the newspaper, as you have, the idea of news, do we want to pursue, having staff pursue the idea of the city either funding or loaning money for a newspaper restart and upgrade? And then as soon as I get done with Mr. Lambert, then I'll go to Ms. Williams, because your hand is up.
Okay, so I'm just going to go back to where I was talking about the small business loan. I'm the, because I'm sure there's going to be certain criteria here, so I'd like to see it there and see if bring it a little bit longer down the table to where you can see what kind of guidelines there's going to be for these loans.
Okay, and you want to, now, as far as the newspaper, do you want to include that in that, or?
It can be a criteria that falls underneath this small business loan.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's go to Ms. Williams. She has her hand up over there and come back around.
Sorry to interrupt, but yes, I want to agree with Ken. The small business startup program, whether it's a loan or a grant, is intended to include the newspaper, and I would have to set a whole program. That, so I would ask of council to, you know, if you're interested in, as you just mentioned, of me looking at a program, that I would therefore bring that program back to council and then allow everybody to apply for it at that point in time, meaning that the newspaper would have ample opportunity to also apply for that instead of me reaching out to them separately. I don't want anything to be skewed as unfair.
Very good. Thank you for clarifying, Ms. Williams. Ms. Lewis, small business loans?
Okay, so we discussed small business loans already, but I hear from our financial director other information, so I think it's kind of premature for us to say yes or no until we have a total idea of what it is that the that the city is proposing. Because I see the word loan here, and loan to me means you've got to pay that money back. You know, whether this is direct taxpayer dollars or taxpayers through the federal government, it's still taxpayer dollars. And in particular, to a newspaper, I think I mentioned at our last meeting that newspapers are a dying breed. And whether it's a local newspaper or whether it's some national newspaper, by the time you get the news, it's old. And I know that, you know, information was presented to us at the last meeting that this would be about local issues. Now, we had two local papers here in Los Banos. Neither one of them are operating in Los Banos, and one was private. So if we do this one, then we've got another private paper that may come back at us saying, we want, we want that money as well. We want money to start our paper back up. And how does this end? So I, you know, I want council to be very strategic about how they plan this out for businesses, but if it's listed here as a startup loan, then my, one of my criteria is that it has to be paid back, and it has to have a period of time that that money has to be paid back. It can't be drawn out for a million years, because it just never works that way. So if this council decides it wants to go down that road, then whatever monies that are given as a loan will have to be paid back. That's my criteria on that. So I will reserve and wait and see what staff comes back with. But at this particular time, based on history, these type of things have not worked out in Los Banos. So I wasn't on council then, but I know historically what has happened from being on the planning commission, so I don't know what staff brought to the council at that time as far as making these decisions, or if it was just willy-nilly, you know, give money to whoever came to us and asked for it without any particular criteria. But yes, newspapers are good. They're for certain people who like to hold them. But for the most part of the generation that's in on this earth today and in this country, they do not hold newspapers, regardless of what we think. So we have to be very careful about how we spend this money. It's every dollar that we get is precious. So that's my take on it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I see Mr. Jones' hand up.
Yes, Mayor. You know, I just want to remind council the reality of this, every time we have, we have a council request to staff, it costs more than just a few bucks. So kind of put this in perspective. Let's just say we were going to roll out a loan program. And let's just say if it was for one individual business, or even if it was a grant, it'd probably cost the taxpayers upwards of about $20,000 when you figure attorney time, staff time involved. I mean, there's a lot of different handstuffs that's for review, reporting that comes to us. And then if we say no, we still wasted that roughly $20,000. So every time we ask for a request for staff to look into something, it costs the taxpayers serious dollars. You can probably bank on it that it's probably roughly about $250 an hour, once you figure their wages, their benefits, their insurance, the workman's comp, utilities for that seat that they sit in, and everything else. It's a lot of money every time we have them do these special requests like this. So we need to decide if this is important, and if we're going, and if we're serious about going forward with a loan program, or if we're just trying to see just for speculation what it's going to look like. Now, I don't know if Mr. Leib was asking for a loan or more of a grant. And we're going to get in a lot of trouble with people as soon as they find out we're giving out free money if we're going down that road. So it's just, I would urge you to reconsider this before we get a lot of staff time tied up in this. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. My take, we would like, bulk of the council would like to see the idea of a small business loan. The newspaper would be just one other small business in that mix. And I don't see any appetite for any grants out of that money for private business. I think that's a pretty safe route to go. And so from that then, I think we can entertain a motion to consider this Resolution 6439 essentially as it has been presented. Because then staff has direction from the conversation here in the meeting. That is a pretty good idea of where we want staff to go. So shall I entertain a motion?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I need a little clarification.
Oh, okay. The motion is to approve the various expenditures in the ARPA. And then it would also include, as a result of our discussion, that they would go ahead and pursue these various recommendations that they made. And the, there's a list there. The, one of the, in the list that under background, small business starter loans was included. And so we would go ahead and approve for them to push forward researching and preparing materials to bring back to council to finalize, along with finalizing what there, what has already been presented there in the finalized items on page 238. Does that make sense?
Yes, but I'm conflicted, because I like what staff presented minus the small business loan program.
Okay.
So how would I make that motion? Or should I just make my own motion on it?
Yeah, you could make the motion minus the small business loan program, and then it would go up to a vote, and let's see if there was a second, and then we would take a vote.
Mayor, you could do it in two different motions. You could do one motion to go forward with the ARPA funding projects that were presented, and then a second motion, whether or not to pursue those other things.
Okay. Does that, does that work for you, Mr. Jones? Would you like to make the motion for?
Sure. Yeah, I'll make the motion. So Mayor, I'd like to adopt City Council Resolution 6439 as, what would that be, as the funds are allocated right now, minus going forward with the additional items, including the small business loan program? Would that be clear enough?
Yes, that motion sounds clear to me. Mr. Vaughn?
We'll try that. We'll try that.
All right. Do I have a second for that?
Hold on a second. I don't think, I don't know if I'm clear on what the motion was.
Yeah, I think that, Mr. Jones, I think the motion, the split in the motion is yes on the items on 238, so that would be one motion. And then you would obviously, and then the other would be, another motion would be for the items on page 237, which are the potential items. So this would be the items on 238, the items that staff is ready to go forward with now.
Yeah, I think it would be clear to do it in two separate motions and two different subject matters, go along with the resolution, and then a separate motion, yea or nay, on the other items.
Okay. So is that clear, Mr. Jones, or would you like Mr. Vaughn to clarify?
Okay, so motion on the project program descriptions, right?
Motion to approve the resolution first.
There's an actual resolution that needs to be approved, which adopts the expenditure plans, which are the ones that I mentioned. Just the Rad Card program, the investment in technology to upgrade city-owned property, homeless assistance, and the parks investment, and then it also approves the budget amendment. So approving that resolution would adopt just the items I'm asking for funding tonight.
Thank you. That's a lot more clear. So Mayor, I'd like to adopt City Council Resolution 6439 as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I have a second?
Mr. Lambert? Yamas, sure, I'll second that.
Mr. Yamas? Very good. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Councilmember Yamas to approve City Council Resolution Number 6439 regarding the expenditures presented by staff. Roll call, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis?
Yes.
Uriah?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Now, Mr. Vaughn, do we need another motion to to give staff direction to pursue these other items? Or is that implied by the discussion and the motion just made in?
It would probably be clearer if you made a motion directing staff to pursue those other items.
Okay. Shall I entertain a motion to direct staff to pursue the other items listed on page 237 of the agenda?
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert will make that motion to.
And do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Mr. Yamas? So I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert, second by Councilmember Yamas, uh, to direct staff to pursue the other items listed in the agenda that have not been listed essentially immediately for funding, as discussed. Uh, roll call, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
No.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
No.
Lamis?
Yes.
Furia?
Uh, yes. Motion carried by, um, by three to two. And, uh, we had, uh, Jones and Lewis dissenting.
Mr. Mayor, may I make the comment, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Lewis?
Um, I, I think, you know, in making this final motion, it appears that, uh, the two dissenting votes are against the, all of the other items that were, uh, not listed on the, um, were not listed on the resolution tonight, and that would not be the case. I, I think it probably was just one item, and we probably should have made the distinction that there was only one item, but not all of the other items that we, that were dissent, you know, the, the vote of dissent was against.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make that comment.
Yes. Uh, can, Mr. Vaughn, um, Ms. Melanie, can we, uh, enter that into the record?
Yeah, you, you could explain your vote. I would just indicate to the chair that it's now 7:04 and we have a seven o'clock, uh, public hearing to start.
Yes. So we'll make that note, that the only reason those were no votes was because of the small business loan item in that collection. I might have to move on. Um, um, and if we need to come back to an item to discuss it, we can, uh, we, so I'm not going to officially close that item, um, because in, just in case we have a few more comments to make, let's go ahead and leave it open. I do have to move to item 10, um, by law, and by some very strict laws. And this is a public hearing. And item 10, if you challenge the proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. And this is item A, public hearing to receive public input and testimony regarding possible revisions to Los Banos City Council Electoral District Plan. And for this, we go to City Attorney Vaughn.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, counsel, members of the public. This item is the third of four required public hearings to be held by the city council regarding its redistricting project. Um, the city started the process earlier this year and held the first public hearing in July. Uh, in addition to the required public hearings, the city has set up a website where interested persons can go for more information on the mapping and the process. And I'll just blast out that address. It's www.redistrictlosbanos.org. Um, the purpose of this, the particular public hearing tonight is to present the 2020 census data and to obtain feedback from the public and the city council regarding proposed mapping options. Uh, as you recall, state law requires that the city readjust its district boundaries in the year following the release of each census in order to rebalance the population of each district in accordance with state and federal law. And so that's basically what we're doing in this project. Um, Jeff Tilton, Dr. Tilton, the city's consultant with National Demographics Corporation is here tonight to present a PowerPoint and to kind of lead the discussion in terms of the census data and the final demographics of that data, and then also, uh, present the draft mapping options. And I believe he has a PowerPoint to do that. I was expecting our counsel, Chris Scannell, to be online, but I don't see him. Um, but we can go straight to Dr. Tilton.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Good to see you again. Um, here we are, the, uh, third public hearing as it relates to redistricting. Next slide, please. Uh, as you, uh, were told before, uh, we had a delay in the census, uh, so our, our timing, timeline rather, is a little bit compressed, but not as bad as, uh, those who had deadlines today, um, uh, such as counties and large cities. So, um, you, you should feel nice and comfortable that your deadline is April 17th. So the first two hearings were what we call pre-draft hearings. It's to, uh, educate folks on the process and to solicit input on the communities of interest, uh, as it relates to the four council districts in the city of Los Banos. Tonight, uh, we are here to look at, uh, some draft maps and to, uh, hear from the public, hear from council with respect to what, uh, what kind of a direction, if any, uh, council would like, uh, as we head into the February 2nd meeting for, uh, hopefully adoption, uh, on that particular public hearing. Uh, next slide, please. So in review, we must follow federal laws. It's, uh, the intention is to, uh, the, the attempt rather is to get equal population in the four, uh, coun- council districts. Uh, we must follow Federal Voting Rights Act, and we want no racial gerrymandering. Then we shift to California's new Fair Maps Act, uh, and we're looking at the criteria there in the middle column, and in, and particularly in, in order, we must follow these criteria. The, uh, council, uh, districts must be geographically contiguous to the extent possible, the extent practical. We do not want to divide neighborhoods, uh, or, and communities of interest. Uh, we want to have easily identifiable boundaries, and we want our council districts to be compact. Uh, we shall not favor or discriminate against, uh, political party in, in this process. So the, the challenge is, uh, uh, is there enough just with following the federal laws and the Fair Maps Act, the column on the left, the column in the center, before we look at the column to the right? Next slide, please. So, uh, as it relates to the census release for, um, the city of Los Banos, and again, it's, it's taking the federal census and then having the, uh, the statewide database adjusted based on the, uh, any prisoners who might be in the, in the California State Prison System who, uh, previously resided in the city of Los Banos since the last census. Um, ideally to have, uh, it would be great to have 11,419 in each of the council districts. Um, you look to the, to the, uh, column to the right, third cell down, you see 17.86. That is the deviation as it currently looks with the current council districts. We need to get that under 10% uh, to be, uh, safe with respect to the courts. Um, obviously equal means zero percent deviation, but in the case here, 17.86 is not going to fly. And how do we get that number? We take the largest, uh, positive number, in this case it would be District 1 at 5.91, and then the largest negative number, which is in District 3, which is minus 11.95, and you come up with 17.86. So that's 17.86 is essentially forcing us to create some new draft maps, uh, to consider in this process. Next slide, please. Thank you. And part of the process, as I mentioned, to the extent practical, we, possible, we don't want to divide neighborhoods or communities of interest. And, uh, you know, we, we've tried to solicit information with respect to gathering information as it relates to what is your neighborhood from the community, et cetera. And, uh, what is, uh, what is or are some of the communities of interest in the city of Los Banos? Areas that have shared social and economic interests, um, and areas that are, and could be impacted by city policies. Next slide, please. So here's the existing districts as it looks today. Um, and again, we're looking at a deviation of 17.86, which is far from acceptable, uh, when you're looking at equal population in the four districts. Uh, next slide, please. So one of the draft maps we have is Draft Map A, or Draft A, rather. Um, there's, I will show you some differences, uh, here at, at the end, but this particular map has a deviation of 9.75. Um, it has, uh, three of the four council districts, when you're looking at citizen voting age population, have a majority minority, uh, meaning there's 50 plus 1% um, uh, greater in, in that, in that particular council district as it relates to citizen voting age population. And citizen voting age population is essentially eligible to vote. And when I talk about the majority minority, it's, it's, uh, it, the, uh, it, as it relates to Hispanics in those particular districts. So District 1 has 69%, 2, 51%, and 4, 58%. So when I talk about majority minority, uh, districts, that's what that, that means. Uh, next slide, please. And now we have Draft B, and, and, uh, it has a deviation, a little tighter deviation of 4.01%. Uh, it also has three majority minority districts, um, and, and it remains with 1, 2, and 4 as the difference. Now, if we go to the next slide, we could look and show you the differences between, um, Draft A and Draft B. In, in looking at, uh, District 3, and looking at the current map, in the upper right-hand, or I should say the northeast corner of District 3 is filled in. It takes, it, it goes into the current District 2. Uh, so it just brings a block, uh, of, of residents, um, in that particular area. So the, the green in the north, it'd be in the northeast section of, of District 3 is added. The difference between A and, uh, B, uh, is for, also for District 2. District 2, um, on Draft B, you have a little bit of a triangle, and I'm sorry, I can't see the street on that, um, that, that diagonal street. It takes a, a portion of, uh, of District 1, uh, when you're looking at the comparison between, uh, A and B and, and A and the existing districts. And again, we must follow, um, census blocks when we're doing this, and that's why you have, uh, currently in District 2, uh, in the northwest section, up at almost to the top, it, you kind of have this funky look, looking, uh, wavy line there. Um, and that's because we have to go by census block, and we tried to respect that with Draft A, but, uh, by adding that, almost that triangle, uh, in Draft B, it, it created more equal population, uh, among the districts, and that's why, so District 2 picked up some more. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions, uh, before you open the public hear, public hearing and/or after. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll go to counsel first for question of Mr. Tilton. Um, Mr. Jones?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Lewis?
No questions.
And Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Tilton, Dan. No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I don't have any particular questions at this time, so, um, I will open the public hearing. And Ms. Melanie, do we have any, uh, items, either an email or live public hearing items for this?
Refreshing my email, and I don't see any emails, and I also don't see anybody with their hand raised.
Okay, very good. So, Mr. Tilton, uh, what, tonight is simply a public hearing and informational, um, is that correct? Counsel needs to make no action tonight, is that correct?
No action. If counsel has a preferred map, and is there something that's looking, uh, more attractive than the other, uh, that's, you know, it's something that we can take into that final public hearing, uh, but it's not required. If there are any adjustments that counsel wants to look at, we can, we can also entertain that as well. But there's no action, um, or you can just wait till the fourth public hearing.
Okay. Uh, I see Mr. Jones' hand raised.
Yes, uh, Mr. Tilton, is there any way to clean up that boundary line between, uh, District 1 and District 2 on the north side?
Uh, we'll have to look at the, the census blocks. Let me see where we at here. Um.
Cause mid-streets are, are always a little difficult. It's always nice to divide by the main street there.
You talking about the little triangle or the, uh, which one, which area you talking about? You said District 1 and 2.
You're muted, Mr. Jones.
I'm sorry. Yeah, if there was any way to clean that up, uh, towards, uh, on Draft A between District 1 and District 2, where our borders, um, gosh, what road is that place? No, it's not placed, that's, uh, sorry, I'm trying to think what road that is off the top of my head.
The one way up to the east?
Yeah, it's on the northeast side.
Is that Wardupton?
So what is it, uh, Walt's Place, and then it goes to Westminster?
It looks to be Rockport Drive. That is the diagonal street.
So I don't believe there's any houses that's actually going to be backing to the back of the wall. So that, again, it looks like that line where that road actually goes. It's still taken in those houses, I, I believe, right there where it actually, except for, I, I see where you're talking about now, I zoomed in, I see. Yeah. There's going to be about four houses right there. Instead of, I, I, I see where, uh, Councilmember Jones is talking about, that's Overland that's coming across from left to right. And, and Overland actually tees into, I, I believe that is Place Road, which if that was the case, then it would just, it would just kind of just block off, it would just put the rest of those five or six homes into that district.
So are we looking at, um, as I'm looking on the interactive review map, if, if there was a way for me to share my screen, you, you could all, you could all see it and, um, is that possible?
Yeah, I can give you just one minute.
After we. Can we give Mr. Tilton screen sharing capacity?
Um, I just need you co-host, so you should.
There you go.
There we go, okay. Okay.
I should say Dr. Tilton, forgive me.
That's, no, uh, Jeff, fine, thanks. So we're talking about this particular area?
Yes. Correct.
Okay. So this is, this can be cleaned up, and, and I'm, I'm assuming you're saying put all of this right here into District 1?
Correct.
Excuse me, District 2?
Uh, no, it'd be District.
I'm sorry, into District 1. Yeah. So here's the thing, these, these things right here, see, those are census blocks. And so that says that 35 people live in that block, 42, 21, and, and 96. So when you're looking at, uh, possibly 200 folks going from District 2 into District 1, which, uh, could really impact, uh, the deviation numbers. And, um.
Is there anything else we might be able to move around to adjust for that or compensate for that in any of the districts?
Well, we did on, we did on, on District, on Draft B, I, I don't, I don't want to, uh, poo-poo your, your request at all. I mean, we could definitely try and see how it falls out and bring it back on the fourth public hearing. It's, it's not a problem at all. We would just call it Draft C.
I mean, if, if you're able to make it work, that's great. Uh, I mean, we don't have to spend a ton of time on it, but, uh, it does make it a little bit easier explaining constituents because they always question which district of MIM, and it's easy when you have some straight lines, some clear boundaries to go off of.
And that's part of the.
I know it's impossible to end up that way on everything, though.
Yeah, that's part of the Fair Maps Act, is we want to have easily identifiable boundaries, and, um, that would help in that respect there.
But, but that would actually, that would actually be great, because, I mean, one side of the street, District 2, the other side of the street is District 1, so.
Right. Right. That's easy to do.
Very good. So we like the easy stuff. Anyone else on council have, would like to chime in? If not, um.
Mr. Mayor, I have my hand up.
Ms. Lewis? There's your hand. I have to scroll across here when I have this green chair. Thanks.
Yes, um, if he can zoom in on this, between District 3 and 4, there's a little small jet out there, um.
Are we talking about the Map A?
Yeah, right. Okay, right there. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'll turn to census blocks.
Yeah, would that help District, uh, 3 to square that off, uh, and do something different at the top?
So here's the square off. It would, we'd have to take these two, uh, census blocks if we were going to, you know, to make some movement with, and it's not, it's still going to have a kind of a jutted look here.
It's California Street over to, to K and up Second, is that what it is?
Uh, it's, it's K and, uh, come on. It's, it's, uh, let's see if I can zoom in. It's, uh, here is California Street right here, and this is Third. It, it, it moves into Third Street, yeah. And if I was to bring it back, I'd hit Linda Vista, and looks like maybe Nevada Avenue, if that's it, or, like, there, there's no street name here.
Yeah, um, it probably is Nevada, because Nevada jogs over.
Yeah, yeah, it's Nevada. So...
So it would still be kind of crazy.
Yeah, plus you're look, you're adding, uh, two-hundred-and-eighty-three into that district, um, and...
Going to a short District Four.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
It, it's tough when you, um, I, I, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, but when you have, you know, you only need eleven thousand in each district, any, any change in a, in a community like Los Banos is just going to, you know, skew things. It's so nice to have, uh, uh, you know, a four-district project, because, you know, first thing you try to do is quadrants, um, uh, you know, doing something blindly, uh, but, um, yeah, unfortunately, in a lot of the central California, uh, Central Valley communities, it's just some minor changes really throws off the, the deviation piece.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Very good. Yeah, my, to me, as, as long as we have it as close to even, uh, in numerical and demographical representation, that's, I think that's the goal, uh, so that the council, uh, accurately represents, uh, accurately represents the district they're elected in, and, uh, I think, so far, it's worked well for us, uh, but now the town population's changed, so we have to adapt accordingly, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, well, uh, Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it looks like, uh, Draft B, uh, the, uh, the districts seem to be aligned pretty good in, in, as far as numbers. Um, how much of a, of a deviation would that adjustment make that we talked about on, on Rockport? Do, do you have an idea there, or?
Uh, are you seeing the PowerPoint right now?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I can't remember. Let me see, let me go back to, uh, that was, uh, Draft A. Looking, I'm looking, uh, behind the scenes here. Trying to, what did I say? Do you remember how many people I said, uh, well?
Like two-hundred?
About two-hundred, yeah. And, uh... And that was from Draft A, right? Close Draft A, yeah. So we'd lose two-hundred, uh, and, uh, we'd gain two, it would, it would push, uh, District One, you know, close to nine-hundred over, um, that, yeah, that's going to take you over the top. Um, I, I mean, I don't, I don't have the calculator in front of me, but my guess is you're going to get over ten percent total.
Yeah, and, and we're trying to avoid that, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, and they look good on, on paper, but it just doesn't translate well.
Well, well, yeah, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna try it and get, and bring it to you and show you. We'll have a, a draft, uh, we'll call it Draft A Two, so you know it's associated with Draft A. Yeah.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Well, you got, thank you, Mr. Yamas. Okay, so, uh, Dr. Tilton, do you have enough input?
Yes.
To, to do some more, to some more work on this?
Yeah.
Very good. All right, in the public, you can go to read District Los Banos, uh, the website, and ha, still have your input. Our deadline for this is April, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, we probably will be able to, um, go work toward adoption. Um, I, I see Counselor Schenell's on here, uh, whether you go resolution or ordinance, he can, uh, perhaps help me out on that.
Okay. Mr. Schenell?
Yeah, I mean, I, what we've been doing is, um, a kind of a, a double-team approach, um, adopting by resolution, but having an ordinance in advance that sets up the automatic repeal of the current districts by ordinance, because that's what your current map is adopted with. Um, so it just kind of clears that out of the way, and then when you adopt your final ordinance, that takes its place.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight.
You're welcome.
Uh, we will then, um, close Item Ten, because this item requires no action. Um, and I will, uh, circle back, and counsel, if you want to raise your hand if you have any further comment on Item Nine before we move on, uh, chair will entertain that now. If not, we'll just move on to Item Eleven. All right, I see no hands raised. So we will move, I will close Item Nine, and we will move to Item Eleven. Consideration, City Council Resolution Number Six, Four, Four, Zero, approving and electing to opt-in to the settlement agreements and authorizing the city manager to execute participation agreements regarding the settlement of national opioid litigation. We go to Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, council members? I think there might still be some members of the public hanging on. Um, I apologize in advance for the complexity of this presentation. I hope you were able to get through my staff report without too much problem, uh, but it, the, the, the matter does require some explanation, um, before we get down to the, the ultimate, uh, vote here. Um, and this item, if approved, will authorize the city manager or his designee, uh, to submit the necessary documents for the city to participate in the national opioid settlement, which I've just become aware of in the last ninety days. Uh, there's a lot of attorneys working on this nationwide, and it's finally come to a settlement which wound its way through the State of California's Attorney General's Office, and through an allocation agreement, and is now kind of filtering down to the counties and the cities of California. So just as a little background, uh, in July of this year, a proposed settlement was announced to resolve, uh, a lawsuit in federal court, and I believe the state of Ohio against three large pharmaceutical distributors, um, McKesson, uh, Amerisource Bergen, and Cardinal Health, and then one manufacturer, uh, was Johnson &amp; Johnson regarding, uh, litigation regarding the opioid crisis. Um, under the terms of the settlement, uh, this three distributors, uh, would pay up to twenty-one billion dollars, uh, and the manufacturer being Jan, Johnson &amp; Johnson, would pay up to five billion dollars, that's billion with a B, uh, to resolve these lawsuits, uh, nationwide in all fifty states. Um, if, uh, and that's if a hundred percent of the eligible counties and cities participate in this, in the settlement. The amount of the settlement varies by the number of counties and cities, uh, that actually participate. Um, assuming everybody participates, and we're close to those big numbers, uh, these distributions will be spread out over an eighteen-year period of time for the distributors' part of it, and the manufacturers' part of it will be distributed to counties and cities over a period of nine years. Uh, California's share of the, this total twenty-six billion with a B is approximately two-point-two billion dollars. Um, but a hundred percent of the counties and cities within California have to participate in order to reach that maximum number. If counties, all the counties or some counties and some cities don't participate, uh, that number decreases based on that participation. Um, and that's because if they don't participate, they have the right to sue individually these same distributors and manufacturers, so it's kind of that, we're not going to pay twice kind of theory. Um, so, in California, went through quite a process to allocate the two-point-two-six billion dollars, um, that's coming to California, and came up with an allocation that includes, uh, counties and cities within the state of California with populations of at least ten-thousand persons, uh, as of twenty-nineteen. Los Banos, uh, obviously is eligible to participate, so we have more than a ten-thousand, uh, population, and, as well as the county of Merced. Um, just some background, the money flowing into California, um, fifteen percent will be scooped up by the state of California, and then seventy percent is reserved for, uh, the four-hundred-and-thirty-one eligible counties and cities that participate, and then fifteen percent is further allocated to those cities and counties that actually were named in the lawsuit. Los Banos and Merced County were not one of those. Um, quite a big pot of money, um, to be distributed amongst the counties and cities of California. Um, so, as of everything, it comes with a catch. The, the monies distributed, uh, must be fun, must be used for abatement, uh, purposes, in, in terms of activities and expenditures that have something to do with, uh, the opioid, uh, crisis. Um, I reluctantly attached an exhibit to your, uh, staff report. It's called Exhibit E to the settlement document. It's about a six-page document that I've read like three or four or five times, and trying to make heads or tails of it, but it, or it, it lists all of the eligible activities that cities and counties can spend, uh, their money on, uh, should they opt into the settlement. If you, if you took the time to take a look at that, you'll notice the lion's share of those activities, uh, are, um, revolving around mental health-type, uh, activities, and as you know, the county of Merced is more, uh, equipped to deal with those types of activities, because they have their own behavioral health department, as opposed to the city of Los Banos that doesn't. So, um, if you were to opt in, we can also elect to have, uh, the share that we would have gotten, we can have it, uh, directly paid to, um, Merced County for them to, uh, put into their program county-wide. Um, and we can do that anytime, uh, sixty days prior to, uh, any payment that's to be made, and we don't have to do that tonight. Um, what I'm asking for tonight is, uh, for you to approve participation in the settlement, because there is a drop-dead date on doing that, and that drop-dead date, um, is January second, and this is the last meeting, obviously, before January second, and there are some documents to be downloaded and signed and returned to, uh, this settlement conglomerate, um, in order for us to participate. And so that's what we're asking for you, uh, to do tonight, is to agree to opt into the settlement. Um, if you do opt into the settlement, um, based on rough calculations of the numbers, I've seen Los Banos's share of the monies that are going to California is, could be as much as three-hundred-thousand dollars. But again, it needs to be spent on behavioral health-type activities that we may decide at a later time, we really don't have the ability to provide, and the default is to default to, um, Merced County, uh, since they do have the, uh, ability to provide those types of services. Keep in mind that the three-hundred-thousand that would be coming to the city of Los Banos would be parceled to us over an eighteen-year period. So while three-hundred-thousand dollars sounds like a large number relatively speaking, uh, when you carve it up into eighteen payments, uh, over eighteen years, um, it's, uh, I think it's going to be a challenge to provide the types of activities that are allowed for us to spend that money on, and it would seem like the recommendation would be at, at some time to not only opt in, but then to default to the, the county in terms of expenditure of those funds. Um, if you decide to go forward tonight, which, uh, staff is recommending that you do, if you don't decide, if you don't go forward tonight, uh, there will be no money for the city of Los Banos, um, and it will take away money from the county of Merced, and it will go straight to the state of California. Um, if you decide to opt in tonight, um, by approving this resolution, and staff will reach out to Merced County, uh, to start discussing with them, uh, their plan for expending their share of the settlement. They've already opted in, as well as the share that's coming from Los Banos, and I can, we can report back to you as to what their plans are for the west side. So, um, with that, I am recommending that you approve Resolution Sixty-four, Forty. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. I'm not an expert on this. Uh, learned it kind of on the fly in the last ninety days. Uh, there is a website, National Opioid Settlement website, that has hundreds of pages of, uh, of information and FAQs. Um, I think most cities and counties in the state of California are opting in, and so I think that's something that you should, uh, support and opt in, and we'll, we'll see, we'll see whether or not we can come up with any programs, or if we want to default to the county of Merced. So that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. So, is there any downside to the city opting in?
No, the only downside is, and it's not really a downside, is that you would be, uh, entering into a release agreement that we could never sue, Cardinal Health, uh, Johnson &amp; Johnson, so on and so forth, which, uh, we're not, we're not going to do. So there really is no downside. It just adds to the amounts of money available in Merced County, either directly from Los Banos, or through Merced County to deal with, uh, remediation of the opioid, uh, crisis in Merced County.
Okay. Uh, question and comment from counsel, Mr. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so it sounds like, um, since we don't have our own behavioral health department within our city, it makes no sense for us to try to facilitate it on our own, just because we probably burned through more than what we'd ever get just in trying to facilitate it, let alone, uh, actually using the dollars to...
Yeah, and I think I, and on that point, I heard that the reporting requirements are going to be fairly significant, so, uh, on an annual basis, so we could be spending as much money as we're receiving and reporting on the programs that we're offering, and the, and the programs I'm looking at on that list don't appear to be anything that we currently have. We might want to take a closer look at them and, and to determine that, but we, we can do that at any time.
Okay, so it does make sense going forward with it and turning the funds over to the county, since they have their behavioral health department set up, and they can assist us with our needs out here.
Yeah, I've already reached, I've already reached out to their county council, who's lead attorney for them on this, and told her that, uh, uh, we would be interested in how that money would be spent on the west side, uh, to the extent that we're generating an additional three-hundred-thousand that's going to the county, that, uh, uh, it would be interested in knowing what services are going to be provided on the west side with the money they're getting, and then any additional money that, uh, comes through the city of Los Banos's settlement. Uh, she's trying to set up those discussions for me right now, but said, told me that they're still in the early stages of figuring out for themselves what types of programs they can provide that will fit into that list, so...
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Lambert?
Uh, nothing else further here, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think, uh, I, I think it's worth us, uh, applying for this, these funds. Uh, there's many categories in the report that our city attorney has given us, uh, as to where these monies can be, uh, spent and serviced. Um, and I, I think the only thing that I would like to make sure and be assured of is that, um, the county does not put this in a general pot of fun... the county does not put this in a general pot of fun and expend it on other cities, that it is definitely coming back to Los Banos for the use and help of the residents here. So whether it's a memorandum of understanding or some other way that we work with the county, I just want to make sure this money is definitely coming back to Los Banos.
I think they have like a satellite office in Merced, or excuse me, in Los Banos. And my thought was going to be to see if they could use that satellite office to provide similar programs that they're providing countywide and provide them here in Los Banos for the West Side.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Yamas?
No, no comments here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, very good. Sounds like there's unanimous support for this, so no sense in not opting in for free money, essentially. So shall entertain a motion to approve Council Resolution 6440.
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert, make that motion to adopt Resolution Number 6440 as read.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Mayor, I'm sitting there. Thank you, Mr. Yamas. I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert, second by Councilmember Yamas to approve City Council Resolution Number 6440 as read. Ms. Melanie Roca?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Item closed. Now, before we move on, and then now we'll be moving on to item number 12.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lambert will be stepping off for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. We will give Mr. Lambert a moment to log off. Okay. Mr. Lambert is logged off as far as I can see on the screen. So we will open item 12, Consideration of Fourth of July Celebration Special Event Fee Waiver. And this is continued from December 1st. And we go to our Community and Economic Development Director, Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So staff is requesting that the City Council would consider authorizing the waiver of a departmental service charges related to the Fourth of July celebration for the Los Banos Downtown Association and adopt a resolution amending the policy regarding waiver or partial waiver of departmental service charges relative to special events. So back on December 1st, the City Council directed staff to bring data back regarding departmental service charges for exempt events to help provide a fair and equitable solution regarding waiver of fees. So staff analyzed the data for exempt events. As you may recall, because those events are exempt, staff does not track the departmental service charges as they were waived with the Resolution 5865, which established the policy regarding waiver or partial waiver. It specifically stated within that particular resolution to have three events, May Day, Veterans Day, and the Christmas Day Parade to be exempted. So historically, we have not been tracking those departmental service charges. So between today's date and, and prior to, so December 1st, after that meeting, we analyzed that those events, the departmental service charges, we sat down with the departments, which consisted of the Police Department and Public Works, that had the most resources as it comes to parades, and determined what those exempt, excuse me, yes, departmental service charges that were exempt, what those fees would consist of. So that data is provided for you. We went back to 2018 to try to give the council a broad enough scope of prior to COVID, what those events consisted of in terms of departmental service charges. So parades are major events. And I do want to note that according to our fee policy, major events are the only eligible events to be waived per that policy. Minor events, which really encompass runs, relays, downtown street fairs, park events, religious processions, or similar minor events are considered to be minor. And major events are parades and other similar events. Now, the Fourth of July event, though it was held at the Henner Miller Plaza, which is a park, because of the magnitude of the event, was classified as a major event and therefore had higher resources dedicated in which the operator, the applicant, the Downtown Association, was charged those departmental service charges. But looking at those historical fees from May Day 2018, Veterans Day, Christmas Parade, and then all of those same events in 2019, 2020, and 2021, we were able to compare what those departmental service charges are. And as you will note, May Day 2020, Veterans Day 2020, and May Day 2021, and Veterans Day 2021, data is not included as those events were canceled due to COVID. So based on the analysis, staff is proposing, in terms of a fair and equitable solution, is proposing to set a maximum cap of what those departmental service charges would be that would be exempt. And then based on the Fourth of July not being around at the time that this policy was written, staff is also proposing to include them as an exempt event as it would meet the requirements of being a benefit to the community. So with that, staff is recommending to amend the policy not to exceed 6,500 for exempt events for set departmental service charges for the May Day Parade, Veterans Day Parade, and Christmas Parade, and include the Fourth of July celebration. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Alves. Council for question and comment. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, I'm going to ask that you circle back around to me after the rest of the council members had a chance to speak on it, please.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And before I start, obviously, if, if we circle back to Councilmember Jones, that should be open to the rest of the council to be able to have other comments. So I did a little bit of research online based on historical information about how this special events ordinance came about. I believe the original ordinance came before council in September 16th of 2015, when it was adopted. And a year later, in 2016, on the 21st, there was a stakeholders' meeting for, where the city, the city council was making recommendations for stakeholders' meeting. November 18th, 2016, and January 9th, 2017, there was a stakeholders' meeting. Many organizations came out who have various interests in their parades, events, and things that were going on. And there was discussion around, you know, the, the existing ordinance to permit the application fee and departmental services. And I think from the review that I made, the stakeholders' main concern was about departmental services charges. It wasn't about the other permit fees and such. So major events, departmental services and charges such, were discussed such as parade, and there was no, again, no concern around the permit guidance. You know, we already have an ordinance in place under the current ordinance, which allows any other major event to come before the city council and make a request for a waiver or a partial waiver. And, and when we set this up, it was many hours put in it by staff, community coming out, and coming up with an equitable resolution. And so the, the request for a major event to have either partial or waiver of fees is by sole discretion of council, and that's what's in our code right now. So I, I really, I really don't see why we need to add another organization in. Again, as, as we do this, it starts to open up a window for other community organizations that could benefit community-wide to start coming in and wanting to have their fees exempt if they decide to put on a parade or what have you. And I, I think it's just a slippery slope if we do this. One of the other things that's in our current ordinance is that if an organization receives taxpayer monies, that they are not eligible to this. Now, I know, I can assume that staff is trying to divide the 501(c) portion of the downtown organization versus the PBIT portion. But none of the other three events that we've exempted are in that type of a category. The Monday's not there, the Veterans Association is not there, and the Christmas Parade is not in, in that type of a category. So I, I'm struggling to see that this is necessary to move forward and change this because it's already in the code that any major event can come before council and request a waiver or a partial waiver. And, and I'm not really sure why we're setting a cap of $6,500 because as time moves on, those caps are going to be broken with the cost of living, the cost of what our employees cost to, to service the parade. So that $6,500 may be exceeded at some point. So are we going to stop even with the, the Christmas Parade, the veterans, and the May Day Parade if it starts to exceed that and say, this is all that we're going to pay? And, you know, the rest, you guys have to refund the city? I, I just think we're, we're creating a monster here. And the other thing that I, I was very, very concerned about is that there is a redline version of the resolution that's presented to council tonight, that's in our packet. And that redline version was not included to council, which we're entitled to see and receive. And so the council at this point only reads what's in the packet and does not know what has been changed or, or crossed out. We always receive redline versions of things that come before council, and this was a big omission on my part. So I, I'm not in favor of changing the ordinance. I think it's good as it stands. There were a lot of hours put into it and a lot of staff time, a lot of council time, and a lot of community time to develop it and make it what it is. And I don't see the necessity of continuing to add other organizations in. And there's no guarantee, even at this point, whether or not the Downtown Association will continue after its current contract, which is in existence. Maybe it will, and that depends on all of the owners of property that are in the downtown zone. So with these other organizations, they don't have those criteria, that criteria before them that they have to be concerned about whether or not people are going to vote them in or vote them out. So that's my take on it. I think we're already covered for major events, for people, for the three grandfathered-in programs that we have. Everybody else should come before the council, and the council needs to make that decision on whether they want to exempt the waiver or give a partial exemption. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That, that's what I have to say right now.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From my perception, the idea here is to try to eliminate this coming back up for approval each time, in this case, the Downtown Association wants to host this event. And so I think that's one of the ideas, is to eliminate the staff having to readdress this, bring it back, have them qualify themselves, et cetera. So I think that just just stringlines that, in my opinion. And it just, we don't have to talk about it again. Yes, potentially, we could have other major events, but they would also have to qualify with the other criterion before they could be allowed to be exempt. Is that correct, Mrs. Alves?
Right. One of the criteria is that a major event has to have occurred at least one time previously with a special event permit. So with that, they would have had to at least have one year with the event and paid all of the departmental service charges.
Thank you. So again, and this, this allows for the organizations to go ahead and plan for their event as soon as possible so that they can get all the sponsors and then have enough sponsors and money to, to make a successful event. So I think from what I'm gathering, that's what this, this revision is trying to do. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Yamas. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So last meeting that we had, Councilmember Lewis, you had brought forward something that you wanted staff to come back with an equitable solution to this. The Downtown Association was asking for a waiver, and you completely bypassed. So that waiver request is still on the table if you don't want to amend this ordinance here. But the cap at $6,500 is kind of necessary so staff can set a budget every year going forward. But if I recall, June 2nd this year, when we had the meeting regarding our Fourth of July fireworks show coming up, you wanted to see this event, you wanted to see how large this event was going to be. And I believe you were there, and I believe you seen it, and it was a big event, and there was well over 5,000 plus people there. So it's no small event whatsoever. And here's the thing, whether it's this event or another 10 more that come about throughout the years, the community is showing up to these events. They want the city to help support these events. They want these private organizations to put them on. And they may ask for funding. I think we need to be open-minded. We're just limiting ourselves to the past, which was three events, and that's it. So I think times are changing, and I think we need to come involved and be open-minded to co-sponsoring other events. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Councilmember Lewis requested opportunity to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I hear Mr. Jones's take on this. And at the last meeting, I did ask for something fair and equitable, but basically, we're coming back with the same thing. And in my research, after that last meeting, and looking at the ordinance as it stands, that, yes, they can ask for a waiver or a partial waiver, but that means that, you know, we've got to see some numbers. We can't just arbitrarily say, yes, you get a waiver or a partial waiver. And again, they, they applied early, but with what has been brought back to us, I really don't see any change in the information provided to council. So I, I'm assuming that, you know, that I, I understand your disagreement on this. And I hear Councilmember Rafiujo Yamas, and, but, you know, we, there are times when we need to adjust ordinances that, that are on our books, and there are times that we need to maybe step back and say, how much further do we want to go? And yes, the people in our city want to do things. They've been locked up from COVID, and we don't know how things are going to wash out in the future regarding this, this particular disease. But I, you know, I find it difficult based on what's already in place and what we agreed upon for exemption based on the community outcry. And. and what we have in place. And to leave the window open for other major events to come forward and ask for a, a partial waiver or a, or whether the council's going to give the full amount of money is kind of where I stand. And yes, I did ask for that the last meeting, but that was based on what we had presented. So it, it took me to the point of having to do further research. And I went back and listened to the videotapes of those council meetings, and I read the, the minutes from those council meetings. So again, I think this particular organization has some unusual quirks in it, and that is because it gets public money from, uh, all the taxpayers in, in the downtown area that are within that jurisdiction that had been, uh, laid out. And they have their 501(c) portion. Uh, the other organizations do not. And it brings me pause because there is that tax portion. And I know that, uh, perhaps staff is trying to say, we're not looking at that portion because they can't take that money and use it, uh, for anything other than what the P-bid law says that they can use it. But we have no other organization that we've given a tax exemption to that has that sort of a split. Um, so again, at this point, I think we already have a window open uh, for them to come and ask for whatever waiver they want to ask for. And the council has the privilege of reviewing it. And if, if this council wants to give up every opportunity that's been set before it to not review things that we've already set code for and just continue to add so that we don't have to do any work, then why were we elected up here? What is our purpose? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Lewis, thank you. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Yes, I mean, realistically, we just did two circles right there because you said that this organization needs to bring forward a waiver. We did bring forward a waiver last week, and you changed it into this. Now, I know you're concerned about the money that gets spent out there in these co-sponsorships, but going back to item nine for the night, when I was discussing how much money we spend with staff time reviewing these ordinances, they're coming up to rewrite this. I'm sure total staff, we probably have about at least 20-plus hours involved in just getting this item to tonight. And when we figure fully loaded, it's probably costs the taxpayers $250 an hour, we just wasted roughly $5,000 on this, just to circle back around it again for the Downtown Association to say, we're asking for a waiver. So why don't we just bring that up? Are we getting a waiver on this or not? I know if this fireworks show or event was with another organization, would you be voting yes in favor of it or not? I mean, that's the big question here because you're almost penalizing the Downtown Association for the P-bid that is enacted. And those are completely separate things, and they should be separated from when you, uh, determine your vote on this. So Downtown Association is asking for a waiver. It was put on the table last meeting, and it never got answered. So when is it going to get answered?
Mr. Mayor, and I still stand behind what I said. And, um, you know, if we're going to sit up here and make every decision and base it on the fact about how much staff time is spent on something, every single one of us have sat up here and asked staff to do something. And, and if we're going to put a dollar amount on staff time and how much is being wasted based on questions that we as elected, have, uh, uh, people have elected us to make sure that we protect our money and spend it properly, if we don't ask those questions, then, you know, for me, I don't, I don't know why I'm sitting here. So yes, I asked the question. And, and even, even at this point, if we decide to go through and, uh, allow a, a, a request for a waiver or a partial waiver to come before us, I want to see numbers. I'm not going to prove anything that I can't see numbers on. I don't care what organization it is in town, who, who runs it, whether it's, you know, partial public money or not. I'm going to ask for the same thing. So that's my position on it, and I won't relent from it. And, uh, that's what I'm elected to do, is ask questions and make sure that things are clear for the public. So, um, we all have our opinions, and, you know, we all can express them. That's, that's why we're elected up here, uh, representing our city and the districts that we're elected into. So I, I will not relent from what I said today or what I said last week. I, I won't change. But I am concerned about continuing to add organizations in under the current code. The current code makes exemptions for that, and there's no need to add another organization in.
Uh, Ms. Lewis, um, then on, on that, how would you feel about just a waiver for this event in this particular time without a change to the ordinance at this time? Do you have an opinion on that?
And I think I stated that earlier, is that the ordinance already allows for a waiver or a partial waiver. There's no need to change it.
Very good.
For major events. It states specifically for major events. Minor events are not eligible for, uh, any kind of waiver.
Very good. Thank you. Um, Mr. Jones, did you want to chime in again? Your hand is still up.
Yeah, so how do we go about getting that waiver from last meeting? Because that was what was on the table, and Councilmember answered it, Deborah, or Councilmember Lewis. You're asking for numbers, and I've seen two sets of numbers on this agenda item. One was the cost for the Fourth of July celebration for 2021, which was $5,639 and 48 cents as far as, uh, department charges. They're anticipating roughly about $6,500 this year, probably due to inflation. What additional numbers specifically do you need to be able to make a decision on this waiver that is put out there?
Ms. Lewis, you're welcome to answer.
And, and it, and it may be that I may not want to vote for the whole $6,500, which is the entire, apparently what they are asking for, for funding. And when I look at the numbers from the other organizations, the most expensive, uh, waiver fees that we've paid are for the downtown parade, which was $5,000 and something. I don't have those numbers in front of me right now. And, um, the least was the Veterans Parade, I believe. And so $6,500 seems a bit much to me, and I need to know what the breakdown is. Why, why are we looking for 1,100, almost $1,000 more for them when the Christmas Parade has been the most expensive parade, uh, of the ones that are exempt that we, we have approved? That are, that are in the category to not have to pay for fees, those, the fees that are exempt? Theirs are generally higher. The, the, um, May Day Parade is right behind them, and then the, the Veterans Parade is next. And none of them have hit $6,500. So we're, you know, with all, all the things that we have to do in the city of Los Banos, we're now elevating, you know, almost $1,000 to an organization that's not in the exempt category.
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify?
Ms. Elms, please.
Um, so that $6,500 was actually set by staff by looking at the data. That's not the request from the Downtown Association. The request is the same as last year, which is 5639. So staff looked at that data and saw that the 2019 Christmas Parade was the most resource intense. Um, it, it was a little bit more intense than the Fourth of July. But to make a fair and equitable solution to come back to the council, we set that cap at $6,500 to allow those organizations to have those events. So that was not, um, I do want to clarify, that did not come from the organization as a part of the waiver. The waiver would be the 5639.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Uh, uh, Flores to you, or, uh, shall we, shall we, uh, move on?
Um, we can move on.
Okay, very good.
Mayor, Mayor Councilmember Jones.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
So we, Councilmember Lewis, you keep dodging the question. If $6,500 is not good enough as a waiver, what is? The highest one was the Christmas Parade in 2021, and that was $5,060. So as the chairman of the Downtown Association, remember this year, that is what we're asking to match that.
The ordinance does not set a cap. The ordinance is... Well, I'm, I'm trying to tell you, if you let, listen to me. The ordinance says that you can come and ask for a waiver or a partial waiver. What, uh, uh, our staff member, uh, Stacy indicated is that, I guess last year, they spent $5,639. So if, if that's what it's going to cost this year, why do we need to set a cap? It's going to, if, if the council wants to waive $5,639 based on last year's event, then come with the number. Come with the number. That, that's all I'm saying. Because they're not a part of the exempt, the three exempts that are, that are on the, uh, within the ordinance at this point. So I, I don't know why, I don't know why staff is setting a, a, a cap on this based on the fact that they have numbers from last year.
Because last week, you asked staff to come forward with an equitable solution.
Okay, so this is, this is this week. Let's deal with this week and what I'm telling you. The ordinance says something specific. You can get a waiver or a partial. More research, research has been done by me based on what has, what came before us at the last meeting. The number's been given to us, $5,639. That's not $6,500. That's a bit more money. So let them come with the waiver. Tonight, the ordinance is being changed. The waiver is not before us tonight. The ordinance is being changed. I'm not in favor of the ordinance, uh, change. That's what I said specifically. Because after I did the research, I found that there, there was already the avenue in there by which the Downtown Association can come to council and ask for waivers or partial waivers. So that, therefore, we don't have to disrupt things as far as this ordinance is concerned to change it because there was a lot of time put into it by the community to, uh, bring it forward. So the, the avenue is still there, Councilmember Jones. It's just the council will, and that's what I keep trying to say. So I don't see the need to go to $6,500 while we have numbers.
Okay, so if the Downtown Association brings this back as a...
Then we'll, then we'll wrap this up because it's pretty clear where, uh, where folks stand. And then I also, go ahead, Mr. Jones. But yeah, go ahead and finish up, and then we'll wrap, wrap up this, this conversation specifically.
So if the Downtown Association brings back for a second time a waiver request, council's not going to deviate from that and say anything else. They're either going to say yes or no when there's a number presented. Is that correct?
Um, is that question posed to Ms. Lewis, or is it posed to the chair?
Ms. Lewis.
Ms. Lewis?
I, I will tell you this. If it's brought back, then the council will make its decision. And that's the only thing I can say. I can't predict what's going to happen. That's, that's all, that's all they can do, is bring it back.
Very good. Okay, um, let's, uh, I, Ms. Ballard has been, uh, with her hand up for a while, so I'm going to go ahead and go out to the public. Um, and, uh, Ms. Ballard, would you like to comment?
Mr. Mayor, she actually has submitted a, um...
Oh, she did?
Yeah, she did. So I could read that into the record. Lucy's having technical difficulties.
Okay, uh, if that's, if that's good with Mrs. Ballard, then that's, then that's, that's good to go then. Please do.
Okay. Hello, Mayor and City Council. I need to speak at the public forum on item 12. I am currently at a biometting. Normally, I would cross the street to join you, but still doing by Zoom. So would you like me to continue or just have her speak? Okay, I'll just continue. The request for city participation, participation for the Fourth of July, I have spoken on this before. All of you were present except for Josh. I still feel the same with regards to this. Maybe we should review the city's ordinance and place a dollar amount that should be shared. There are a few events that should be shared because they have been celebrated for 50 years and are part of the fabric of our community. I will list them. May Day Parade, Veterans Parade, DES Parade, and Christmas Parade. Some of these events are over 100 years old. I understand the above parades. I don't understand a fundraiser, Fourth of July celebration, when money is paid to participate. This is a whole-day event, not just two-to-three-hour parade. This also includes not only street closures and safety measures, but facilities and equipment. Thank you for your time and listening. I am taping this meeting and will view your response. Kathy Ballard, Los Banes, California.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Ms. Ballard, um, if people are listening. Um, so, um, the, what's before us tonight is a, a change in the ordinance. And last, last meeting was simply a waiver, and there's been some research and some, some information and exchange of ideas. Um, the, the Downtown Association is rather unique and presents, uh, some different challenges. Uh, one of them is, uh, the fact that they do handle the P-bid money. And the P-bid money does come from, um, the landowners through the taxation system. The largest contributor to the P-bid money is the city of Los Banes, because we are the largest landlord. Um, what I hear, what I've heard, and my research, there is some concern about the Downtown Association's, uh, financial, uh, system and is P-bid. For instance, this, they're coming before us as a nonprofit. But they also are functioning with P-bid money collected through the taxing, taxing power of the city. Um, I would be perfectly in favor of, of, of a waiver at this time. I would not be in favor of amending the policy yet until I've seen a, a complete independent audit of the finances of the, of the P-bid, uh, money and how it's being spent, and how it's being operated, and where it's being spent. Then we can go to the public and say, this is how the money that's being collected through the taxation system is being used. And we can say, okay, uh, we have an independent, uh, source there that says, okay, this is a nonprofit, and all of this, this whole event, uh, that they're doing is the nonprofit side of their operations. Then we can look at, um, the, the ordinance and see whether we want to add them into this grandfathered item. For now, I'm totally in favor of a waiver for this event so that we can have it again. And in the meantime, um, and in the meantime, uh, ask for an audit of, of the P-bid, which the city has the authority to do under the P-bid law. And I think it's been running about three years now. And, um, so I would like, Mr. Vaughn, can we, uh, can we do that? Can we go ahead and make a motion to, uh, do the waiver now? Or would we have to bring the waiver back to another agenda item?
So, uh, referring to, uh, the staff report, one of the recommendations, I have it right in front of me here on page 285, is authorize the waiver of departmental service charges relative to the Fourth of July celebration for the downtown, Los Banes Downtown Association. That's one recommendation. And then the other is to adopt the resolution amending the policy. So as I see it, you can do one or two, or one and two, however you want to do it. But yes, you could, uh, go ahead and, uh, vote on the waiver tonight.
Okay, so, uh, even though I hold the chair, I do have the authority to make a motion, and I will make it. Um, I will move to, uh, grant the waiver for this year and, uh, and not, uh, amend the ordinance at this time. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Jones. I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Discussion, discussion before the vote.
Thank you.
Ms. Lewis?
Uh, is the waiver going to be for the, uh, $5,639?
Uh, the waiver as presented, uh, in, within that range, uh, is what they expect. And I guess we could, you know, we could allow a little leeway in that, a few hundred dollars one way or another. But I think within that reason...
The amount was not to exceed 65, $6,500. So I, I just need for clarification because that's pretty close to $1,000 difference.
Yes. Uh, Ms. Elms?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I can clarify. So the $6,500 would have been applied to the all four exempt events, not just Fourth of July. But for Fourth of July, what is anticipated for that particular event would be the 5639. It would be similar to what the costs were for 2021.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, um, so, uh, we'll take... So we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert. Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Waiver has been granted. The ordinance will not be amended. And so we'll look for future processes regarding ordinance. But for now, the Downtown Association has a waiver. They can proceed with putting on a beautiful event. And we will, we will close item 12, move on to item 13, advisement of public notices. And through that.
Can you hold on one second until Mr. Lambert joins us?
Yes. And I've got, the public notices, I assume is going to go to Ms. Elms, correct? And we'll wait for Mr. Lambert. I see he's coming on. Okay, Mr. Lambert is on. Move to item 13, advisement of public notices. One report, Ms. Elms?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. The public hearing for Wednesday, December 22 at 6:00 PM will be for a cottage food operation. This is for Cara Gomes, Doing Business as Special Treats LLC at 648 Pennelli Drive. This meeting will be held virtually via Zoom, and the link will be provided on the planning commission agenda. That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Elms, we'll close item 13 and go to item 14, city manager report, Mr. Penaro.
Thank you, Mayor Faria. Appreciate it. So a couple things I'd like to add. So last week, we had the Berkshire Hathaway event. Downtown is a real good event, attended by the public. So just want to say thank you to all the folks for going out there and continuing to support our local businesses in town. It's always exciting to see everybody involved and engaged there. So good stuff. Thank you to George and his team for putting that together for us there, there at the old Vilati's building. So they did a great job hosting and welcoming the community. So awesome work on that. Congratulations to them and all the work they did to that building. I'd like to give a big thank you to the Los Manos High School band. They were really nice and come around out, and there's about five or six of them that, you know, played a little, little piece for us. So it was really cool, a lot of fun. So thank you to them for doing that to us, or for that event. Also want to give a big thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. They've been excellent in orchestrating those events. You know, from the Arco to Grocery Outlet to the Berkshire event and coordinating of getting the band out there. So good work on that. Thank you, folks at the Chamber. Last night, we had the veteran event. That was a lot of fun. The veterans, folks there had their annual Christmas party, so that was a lot of fun. My first time attending, so I was really excited and I'm happy about that to see all the folks there in the community and be involved. I got to admit, they had some really good cookies there too, so. I'm a cookie monster, to say the least. So I was, I was hanging out by the, by the treats sections more than what I probably should have. So that was good. Also, you know, a big thank you to all the folks who donated throughout the community, all the prizes and things of the sort. Thank you for donating to them. It's always nice to be able to see how the community participates. And I feel blessed and privileged to live in such a community that really cares and gives back. So very exciting to see that. Supervisor Silveira was there, and I know he was an auctioneer. So I learned that. It was pretty good. So awesome job there, Supervisor Silveira, on that one. Also tomorrow night, Keller Williams Property Team is having their mixer at 5:30, 2:45, 8th Street. So I'd like to go support those folks, head on out there. And thank you once again to Chamber folks for all your hard work and getting that done. We appreciate it. I want to give a big shout out and a big thank you to Assistant Fire Chief Robert Strout. Thank you for your hard work and all your years of service. We really appreciate that, all you've done for us. And on December, we had, Councilwoman Lewis had nine years of service on December 5. And Councilmember Jones had three years of service on December 5. So thank you, folks, for all your years of service and all you've done. We appreciate it. I thank you for that. Also, Mayor Faria, your birthday on December 6. So happy birthday to you on that. Happy 21st. So we enjoy. Another big thing is I've got a lot going on here in Los Manos. So on the 16th, which is tomorrow, the 23rd, Santa Claus is going around at the local fire department and, you know, going around the different communities and getting involved and waving at the kids. So if you're around, go take a look at the Facebook page of the local fire department. You know, go give Santa a wave and bring in some holiday cheer to all of us. So I know it's been a long-winded report, but a happy birthday to the anniversaries and everybody throughout the city. There's just too many for me to mention, but just want to say happy birthday to all the employees and all of their anniversaries throughout the city and every department. And thank you, folks, for your service. Merry Christmas to everybody and a happy new year.
Thank you. Well, a report on MCAG, Peninsula Clean Energy and Measure V. Well, Peninsula Clean Energy, we're going to have our meeting tomorrow. And nothing too momentous on that. We do want to remind the public, though, that Sandra Benetti is the liaison for PCE, Community Outreach Officer here in Los Manos. And you can reach her and talk to her about when we go to Clean Energy in April. And it's very exciting. Also, some cool stuff, learning. This Clean Energy thing is not just wind and solar. We've learned now that the dairy industry is generating electricity without combustion from the methane produced by the dairy, by the waste. And so there are pipelines already. I talked to Supervisor Silveira, of course, he is a dairyman. His family are dairy people. And I talked to him, and there are already main lines, methane, gas, natural gas, main lines in turn lock coming from the dairies. And this is clean energy from our very own big industry in the valley, agriculture. And when I pointed that out, the PCE folks hadn't heard of it. And so I think Los Manos, not only are they good for us, we're good for them because we're giving them a perspective they otherwise would not have. And we're having some wonderful conversations there. MCAG, tomorrow, I will be bringing an item. And that is, the legislators in the region have been telling us we need grant writers. Now, Los Manos doesn't have a whole lot of money to pay grant writers. But if we can see if MCAG, if there's some way we can find some money, maybe pool resources in the county to see if we can get some grant writers to bring that money home. There's a lot of money to be brought in, and it doesn't just get dropped on the city. We have to write it in a form of grants. And the only way you get grants is with professional grant writers. So I'm taking that to them tomorrow. It's my item. It's actually on their agenda tomorrow, but it was my recommendation. Measure B Committee, I have nothing new to report there. And so at that point now, at this point, and I will pass it over to Councilmember Reports. And first on the list is Mr. Yamas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say first off, thank you for the Chamber of Commerce for hosting the Christmas Parade. It was a lot of fun, a lot of hard work. So thank you very much for that. BFW, American Legion, again, dinner last night. It was wonderful, great turnout. Retiring Assistant Fire Chief Strout, thank you very much for your service. Stay busy, do a daily seven, stay fit. And to staff, particularly the staff, I just wanted to say, the Los Manos City staff, everything they do, hard work. I know a lot of times we're struggling up here, but we appreciate your professionalism. And you're producing good quality products for us to review. So happy, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to our staff. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Mr. Jones?
My report, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure. I believe Chief Breezy and Chief Hurley are still on here. But I want to say thank you to both chiefs and to our firefighters and to our commanders of the police department and our officers. They have been working pretty hard and diligently and through these holidays. And I appreciate all their hard work, and hopefully they'll be able to enjoy some of these holidays. And Merry Christmas to all them.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to just make a comment and thank those that are in the public when they call or make a request of me, which is often, they're very cordial and kind and state what it is that their concerns are so that I'm able to help them. And sometimes there are people out there who do not behave in that manner. So I want to give a shout out to all the people in Los Manos, whether they're in District 4 or those that have answered their calls and assisted them in other districts. Thank you for your kindness and just being able to reach out in a way that I can assist you and give you the answers that you need. But if I don't know what you need, and, you know, you may threaten me by saying I'm going to go on YouTube or private, you know, news media in some way. That doesn't help your situation. So I would just request that if people have something to say, be open and let me make a decision on whether or not I can help you in that manner. So aside from that, I want to, first of all, show this award. It's from Mid Valley Disposal in recognition for the city of Los Manos for prompt implementation of SB 31383. There are three cities that received this award, Los Manos, Sanger, and I can't remember the third one. But this is in regards to the new law in, starting in January 2022, where we are required to reduce organic waste disposed in our landfill. And this is part of the food scraps that have to go into your greenways, solid paper, kitchen and food operations, restaurants, yard waste, organic lawn waste, organic textiles, carpet and wood. So our waste caller will be reaching out to the city of Los Manos to let us know specifically how this operation is going to roll out. It's still very questionable in the state of California how they're going to do it. But they wanted to recognize us because we came on board early to work with them, to set up, to do these organic disposals in our city that were required to do by law. And I'd also like to thank Councilmember Yamas for coming and sharing in this event. It was, it was a luncheon that we were invited to accept this award. And so I went on behalf of council and the city to accept it. So thank you to our waste management, disposal Mid Valley, for giving us this award. And I know that we'll, we'll be on board come January of this year to start the process. And they will be working diligently with us to make sure that it goes forward. So to our city manager, I'll be bringing this into the office and turning it over to you so it'll be on display for the good work that's done. Thank you to our staff for working and making sure that that happened because there are many cities out there that still don't know what they're going to do or how they're going to initiate this program. And I'm very proud of our staff for making sure that we're ahead of the game and ready to go. We had a wonderful Christmas parade this year, a lot of turnout. It was a great community event, and I was really happy to see it go forward. We had a lot of people who even showed up at our virtual Christmas parade last year, which indicates that people are looking to go to things. And so I was really glad to be a part of the Christmas parade this year and to see all the people who turned out. But the day after, we had Breakfast with Santa. And our acting Public Works Director, Nicole and I, were there to serve breakfast to the participants. I think we had over 100 people who purchased, I'm sorry, over 600 people who purchased tickets for this event. And Santa was there. It was a great turnout. We enjoyed serving the public. But I want to give a special shout out to our public work staff who always, with love and affection and great skill, cooked breakfast to serve the public for Breakfast with Santa. But they did a special thing for us this year, and they made some burritos. And I'm telling you, they were smoking. So Councilmember Jones, you missed out this year on the burritos. And also, I want to give a shout out to our mayor because the mayor brought some venison with his special seasoning on it. Now, I'm not a game, I'm not a wild game person, so everybody else had some of that venison. So I left it on the table for the rest of it. So, but still and all, it was a really, really good event. And thank you to our public work staff again, and thank you for the burritos. I'll look for something else even better next year. So Councilmember Jones, you don't have to come. I'll eat you a portion of the burritos. Let's see, I think I have one other thing here. The Air Quality Control Board that I sit on, I spoke to our CEO, and we've gotten another pile of millions of dollars that have been given to this government organization. And I'm told that our valley receives more money than any other air quality district in the United States because they are so far ahead of meeting the criteria of the federal government in the state of California. So I just want to let people know there's money out there for new and used vehicles to help you if your vehicle is on its last legs. Please, everybody, remember, by January 1, 2025, none of us will be allowed to burn wood in our fireplaces. So take advantage of the money that's out there to assist you in purchasing a new gas or electric insert and for your fireplace while the money is there. From Fresno going south, they've been taking advantage of these funds for quite some time. And I'm working with this organization to get out information to our public to make sure that they take advantage of whatever assets are there. And there are plenty there to be had. So just go online and look up the information and take advantage of it because the resources are there. And the only criteria is that you, for sometimes, some areas, you purchase things that are necessary for your home. Other things are income qualified. And there's even money there for government agencies, for the school district, and even for the county. There's money there to, for your conference room, to rebuild it, to make it more of a state of the art for the 21st century that we live in. So to the public, if you, if you need to replace your lawnmower or any of your gardening equipment, from gas combustible items to battery or electric, there's money there for it. So please take advantage of it while the money is there. And I just want to put that out there. I want to really thank our staff for the work that they have done throughout this year. Our administrative staff, our public work staff, our Parks and Recreation Police and Fire, they all do an excellent job. And I really just want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a happy and safe new year. And the same goes out to our council as well. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Well, first of all, Mr. Collins noticed that I had this coffee cup. And I, my granddaughter would be very upset knowing that I use this cup because it has a word on it that's not very nice. And it was given to me by, by one of my relatives when I got elected. And it just happened to be the closest one I had, the closest one I had when I went to get my coffee for the evening. And so I'll let everyone see it because this is the last time I'm going to use it in the council meeting because I don't want to. because I don't want to offend my granddaughter. That's not a nice word. So thank you, Mr. Collins, for reminding me of that. The parade was magnificent, the biggest we've ever had. Parks and Rec, man, you guys outdid yourselves. You even had miniature golf, which is one of my faves. I don't play real golf. I had so many activities. It was just fantastic. And we had a great time. Yes, I brought my venison, and it was marinated in like Portuguese marinade, and it came out pretty good. The finally, and then once again, congratulations to Assistant Chief Strout, well-deserved, well-earned retirement. And with that, we will move to closed session. Item A, Conference with Real Property Negotiations, pursuant to government code section 54956.8. Property located at 610 Pacheco Boulevard, Los Manos, California, approximately 0.296 acres, assessors parcel number 026-121-006. City negotiator, City Manager Penaro, City Attorney Vaughn, Community and Economic Development Director Elms. Negotiating parties, Civil A Viladi Trustee, under negotiation, purchase price and terms of sale. And we will report out after closed session.
Mr. Mayor, can you adjourn? Can you adjourn for the open session, please?
Sure. So shall I entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, salute.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. Mr. Yamas, is that correct? Very good. So I have a motion by Mayor Perkins Lewis and a second by Councilmember Yamas to adjourn tonight's meeting. A roll call, Ms. Melanie.
Jones.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Lamis.
Yes.
Faria.
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Regular meeting adjourned at 8:45 PM. Thank you. All right, everyone, we've come out of closed session. And by a vote of 5-0, City Council authorized the City Manager to sign a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of approximately 0.296 acres located at 610 East Pacheco Boulevard at a purchase price of $170,500, subject to a 60-day due diligence period. And with that, we will officially adjourn the meeting at 8:55 PM. Thank you for joining.